The previous school year. So what stands out is overall, the last three years, we've lost students. And so some of the things we've spoke about with administration is really looking into some of the specific data as far as where you request student transcripts that we can see, is there some sort of trend? Did they stay in the district and they're just choosing something else? Or did they move out? What are some of those reasons so that we can isolate and maybe work on some of those deficiencies, if there are deficiencies, on trying to get students to stay in our districts? So we move to the next series of pages. We'll start with page 18. Snapshot of what has changed from five years ago to this current school year. Orange is an increase, green is a decrease. Really, this is just to help you see some of the inner workings of the model. Where are we seeing enrollment change? How does this relate to subdivision life cycles? Are we having more kids, fewer kids? Is it related to the value of homes, the age of home, square footages? All that is built into how we're statistically analyzing what's happening in the district. Page 19, this is simply the students that are geocoded with their addresses. Where do they live and where are those hot points? So the greatest density are going to be in red. And there's several large orange spots. One that stands out is up there, just south of Gateway Drive, over east of 29th Highway, so over by the university. And then when we come down to, I think, Century Elementary, they're off of 17th Avenue. And then if we go east a little bit of Discovery, you can see some, the largest density of students. So again, just where are students? How does that relate to some of the geography in the community? Next page 20, I probably mentioned most all of that information in what I've spoke about to that point. That'll take us to development, part two. First off, I want to stop. Is everyone able to hear me good?
Yes.
All right. Outstanding. Outstanding. So if we go then to page 22, this is a page for a metric of trying to correlate what's happening with census population, which is the green line. And let me make note where we see a adjustment from 2019 to 2020, that's because of the decennial census. Things get recalibrated with the census data on that information. So key thing there is we have more people moving into the community year in and year out. The blue line represents the building permit activity, or actually I'd say certificate occupancies, when we actually have people moving into homes. And you can see that on the last couple of years, it's not been nearly as much as what we've seen in previous years where it was over 300 units. So it slowed down a little bit in the building activity. The red line represents our enrollment change, and we've had three consecutive years of slight decreases. There's slight decreases if you go back to the previous slides. Even though we have small senior class, larger incoming kindergarten class, we're having some of these enrollment changes and migrations that are negatively impacting what our enrollment is. If we go to the next page, page 23, this is about yield rates. So when we look at your district type of development, so we have single-family units, and that bottom row represents the number of K-5 students for every 100 single-family units. Back in 2004, there was 19 K-5 students for every 100 single-family units. Here in 2022, that's decreased to 17. And we've built since 2014 about 850 new units. So naturally, unless we see a resurgence of building activity like we were going back to 2012, 2015, it's hard to maintain yield rates at the level when we were experiencing that type of building activity. The other thing I want you to take on this table is where you see orange, it's greater than three of the district average. And where you see it shaded in the light green, it's more than three, fewer than the district average. We do the same thing for multifamily developments. And if I quickly talk about that on page 24, in 2004, we averaged 11 K-5 students for every 100 multifamily units. In 2022, that dropped to eight. This is probably one thing that I've seen that's a little bit different than the other districts we've been working with in North Dakota. I usually don't see a drop by as much as this. It might only be one or two. So that's something to keep watch of on the multifamily developments. We go to page 25. We're going through a series of maps to again build into the modeling. So on page 25, we're looking at the average year that inventory came online. And so the newer inventory is going to be in the red and orange. And no surprise, it's mostly on the south side of the district. We go to page 26. This is where we're looking at the median home values. And again, the orange and red are the least affordable, most expensive. And the majority of that housing inventory is on the south side. And we do have a pocket around Century Elementary, and there's little intermittent portions that are in the downtown area as well. We go to page 27. This is to help visualize where we're seeing the building activity since 2019. And again, the cluster of dots are predominantly just on that 62nd Avenue corridor. We do have a smattering that are up a little bit further north, west of Columbia by Discovery Elementary, but really the most of them are there on that 62nd Avenue corridor. We go to page 28. This is another way of visualizing the building activity. So the green portions of the bar represent what was built at the start of the decade. And then that kind of peachy orange color is what was built during that decade. So we've had quite a bit of building activity the last decade, over 4,300 units. And then you can see for the last two years, we're over 600 units. So we'll see how things play out. The economy's going to be a big contributor to what we see. The university enrollment as well. And as we move to page 29, this starts to visualize conversations we've had with the city, touring the district, just to validate what we're seeing happen in your community. Green areas represent where we're seeing current activity or could in the next couple of years. Yellow is maybe greater, more out towards five years. And the purple is likely even beyond that. So again, you can see a whole smattering of options throughout the district, but the bulk of them are going to be on the south side. All of that's tied back into page 30 for the number of units. What I try to focus on is the column of potential units. The green again is where it's currently likely to happen. Yellow, likely in the next five years. Purple, out towards 10 years. This gives you kind of indicator of what could be built and how that then ties back to the infrastructure. And if you go back to the page, when you're reviewing this, like page 22, when we look at that, how many units are we building per year? You can see how quickly we can start consuming some of the available units that are in the green and have to start moving into the yellow areas. So as we move to page 31, that ties into everything I've mentioned up to this point, maybe some others in a little greater detail. If we move head to page 33, this gets us into the projections, the real core thing of the annual analysis that we do for you every year. Key thing on this page, this is your market forecast. So there are students that are homeschool, local, private school. They're not in this number. This is who's been attending your building for the past enrollment, and then who likely will be attending your building based on all these different variables that we look at. And so we have a black line that breaks from the past enrollment to the projected enrollment. And here again, I mentioned this at that 100,000-foot view. Here's the visual of where we think enrollment is headed, where we'll have slightly more elementary students. Middle school remains fairly consistent. And the same thing at the high school. When we look at the total enrollment, we're at about 7,400 students. You can see there's a couple of years where we hit right at 7,500. And then when we get to the end of the projection periods, we fall a little bit below 7,500 students in 2027, 28. So we go to the next page, page 34. I will explain that information on the following page so that you can have that up in front of you. So page 35, this takes that information that's on page 33, plays it out by building. So we have each of the buildings listed on the left-hand side and their capacity, the grades being served. And then for the past school enrollment, we show it for the last five years. And then we show the projected enrollment for the next five years. By building, we show the past enrollment three ways. I'll explain this like I do every year because there's a lot there. The middle row for every building, green font, is based on where a student resides in its association with the attendance boundary for those grades being served. The bottom row for every building, blue font, attend, is based on the student data. Where do the number of students actually attend for each of these buildings? The top row, that res/att, that's a subset of the reside. So do they actually reside and attend that building? So when I look at Ben Franklin, we had 308 students that resided there, but 311 that attended. So we say, hey, plus three. It's different than that. Only 272 of the 308 resided and attended Ben Franklin. And so they grew from 272 to 311 from students from the other elementary attendance boundaries. Reasoning for that could be transfers, could be programs, or a myriad of things where there might be two addresses for a student, one for the mom, one for the dad, and depending on where that address was, and they look like they're not there, but they actually are. Projected enrollment, we show it as reside and attends. That way you can understand if you force everyone to go to the building based where they reside, that's going to be the reside number. And then we've tried to build in some of that flexibility that does occur with school choice. What does that look like for the attend? Other information that's on this table. Orange shading represents where the building exceeded or will exceed the capacity identified for that school. Green represents where it is under 70% utilization. And we signify that just because when you start to get to 70%, there may be some nuances in that building that relate to how you have to share staff with other buildings because it's so much smaller than other buildings. That may not be how you're doing it. We just know that when we get to 70%, that's maybe a sign that there's something happening a little bit differently. What this suggests for us is we're looking at the elementaries. Discovery definitely continues to have issues through the next five years. The same thing with Viking. Doesn't matter if I look at Discovery, Viking, or Wilder, whether it's reside or attend, we still have issues. So even if they would have to pull the throttle down on accepting students into that building, whether they know it or not, when I say they, administration, they're forcing them to one of the other buildings to get them under utilization. But even if they did that, the reside number is over it. So it doesn't really much matter. So those are the buildings that are overutilized. And then we can see that we run into some situation at Lake Agassiz, and then Windship with the attend. But again, we could probably choke that one down to push kids back into buildings where we're not full, just again through school choice, because the reside number is below the capacity of Windship. That's the elementary buildings. We go to the next page on page 36. This is the secondary buildings. And so really the big story here is Valley Metal continues to be over capacity. Two of some underutilization challenges with Schrader in some years. And I don't worry about Community High because that's a different program, and the students come from all over the district. So that reside number is based on out-of-district or unmatched students that we track in a way to make sure they're accounted for in our projections. That's the projections. As we move to page 37, this just gives you what I've been talking about, actually gives it into some narration that you can follow. Some things I do want to focus on are those main drivers. So one of the things is we've had three consecutive years of just slight declines of roughly around 20 students. We're continuing to see large kindergarten classes, but we will need to watch that. I think in about three years, we potentially could see fewer number of kindergartners. And so we'll want to track that. We've definitely seen some changes to the benefit of the district enrollment with cohort losses being a little bit less than what we've seen the previous two and three years. And then when we look at the development activity, we've seen a slowdown of activity, and we've seen what the impact is on yield rates, that it's lower than what it has been. But we do know there's some slated potential new developments that are going to be tracking on coming online in the next five years. And then if we look at the migration trends, three years in a row where it's ended up being a negative, so more on that green slide, our green part of the bar column. If we go to the next page, that's an intro into the next steps, which get me to my last page, page 39. What I want to leave you here with, I've been talking a lot in somewhat some things certainty, other things saying, hey, we need to watch. That's really showcased on the bottom of this slide with the forecast increase with orange areas. So if we hit those things, we're going to be greater than what we forecasted. If we have more of them hit the green areas that say forecast decrease, then our number is going to be a little bit lower than what we were hoping it should be. But overall, we think things are going to be pretty stable, potential for there to be some increases, but we definitely have to watch some of these other variables because I could see some things changing three years out, four years out. I want to stop there, pause. Questions that you have as board members? If I can answer them, I will. If not, I'll follow up with the superintendent on some of those specific answers.
Rob, this is Eric Lynn. Before we open it up, I'll just ask a question. In looking at other school districts in the Midwest that you've been working at, can we make any assumptions or conclusions to what effect COVID has had on some of this? And are you seeing similar stuff here that you're seeing in other cities or any other comments you have about that?
Yeah, that's an excellent question and something I should have highlighted. So I compare the COVID impact to what we've seen in other districts where they've had natural disasters, specifically floods or tornadoes. It takes us on average with a natural disaster, 10 years to recover back to what your enrollment was beforehand. Again, how long is all dependent on how furious that natural disaster is. What I don't know with a pandemic, how many years is it going to take to get back to where enrollment would have been previous to the pandemic? Some of those are going to get into how the programming is in the buildings and what that attractiveness is. And some of the persons that left, regaining in their mind trust to be able to come into the public school system. So the verdict is not yet fully known on how long it takes to get back to where enrollment was pre-pandemic and where things were trending. But I do know from now being two years removed from that information, you can see some things that we even talked about with your district tonight, some indicators that are showing that there's some positive movement in enrollment recovery.
Thank you. I'll open it up to other board members, questions, comments, thoughts. Cynthia, do you have any online?
I do have a couple. I don't want to monopolize.
Go ahead. We can always turn your mic off if you go too long, so.
Yeah, okay. All right. So my first question is, I've got just a couple here. The increase in students around Windship and Phoenix. It's on your page 18, our page, electronic page 26. If I look at that, I see the increase in students around Windship and Phoenix. But then, if you go to the next page, that heat map, it's student density is low density. So page 27, electronic, 19 of yours. I probably am just not making these connections. Could you explain that, please?
Yeah, that's a good question. So each of these two pages kind of show the data in a different way. So on page, with the student count change map, that's just showing five years ago, how have we changed in enrollment? Has it increased or decreased? Doesn't get into the density that the heat map does. So for instance, we could have a rural area that five years ago had 20 kids, and then in this current year, there's only five kids. And so it's going to show, wow, there's been an incredible enrollment decrease. And then when we, which is like, wow, that's a lot. But then when I go to the density page, heat map, that while it's really not as many students in those locations for this current school year as what may be the previous map, student count change map was potentially indicating. So it looks at the data a little bit differently, but you have to take them both in conjunction with how you look at what the enrollment may look like in the future.
Okay, that helps. That's kind of where, I hadn't come to that until you started talking tonight. So then my next question, if you could go to page, your page 30, electronic page 38, just kind of a question here on these 11 units that are listed. I'm not on that page, so I'm having trouble following my notes here, but develop 11 units. Does it make a difference at West Elementary? That's how you had listed it? If those are rentals now?
Yeah, so. Exactly. So they're not being purchased outright. You lease them, much like an apartment complex.
That's what I've heard.
The verdict is still, yeah. The verdict is out on what we see with them, because this is something that's relatively new, that we're starting to see developments that are being built where they're going to be leased out in that type of manner. And so I'm still on the fence of, is it going to be like, let's say, what we've historically seen with duplexes and townhomes? Or is this something altogether a little bit different with the yield rate? And so as we looked at that, we sided with, if it's going to be built with something that's greater than two bedrooms, we're going to likely yield students regardless if it's something that you buy outright or you're leasing. The key indicator we think in the future is going to be, how long do they stay in those places? Our gut feel from some other developments that we've been tracking that maybe are a little bit further along is that they may stay longer because of the type of unit that it is.
Thank you. Yeah, the concern I have for that area is that it's close to the university, so it could just be university students.
Correct.
But, you know, we're just all hypothesizing. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thanks, Cynthia. Other questions from other board members? Go ahead, Amber.
Rob, I don't know if you can answer this or if this is for Dr. Brenner, but especially for the new members on the board, when we see capacity, can you talk about what capacity means? Is it just simply butts in the seats? Is it programmatic? What does that definition entail when you look at those numbers?
Yeah, so we'll talk about, I'll start with capacity, and there might be some more conversation that administration has. So typically with that capacity, let me go to the elementary page. Because I think when we're looking at Discovery, for instance, I know we have a lot of special education programming that's in that building. And so this, I believe, is the capacity for the core programming that's taking place in that building. And so if there's other special programming that's occurring, if that space as classrooms is being used for that special space, that's not part of this capacity. So it's how we can operate with the other programs, the core programs in each of these buildings.
Dr. Brenner, do you want to add anything to that?
No. Well, yes, I will. Unfortunately, sometimes we shift and move special ed programs to buildings where there is capacity, but that's not the best practice. The best practice is to keep kids in their home residential neighborhood schools and provide programming for them there. But we have had some space issues where we've had to move. But the last thing you want to do with some of our kids on IEPs is to do with some of our kids on IEPs is dislodge them and displace them into a different building.
Other comments or questions from board members? I have one for you, Dr. Brenner. So as the CEO of the district, what is your take on this report? I mean, we got Rob's take, but I'm curious as to what's your take on this.
Well, it certainly is conservative, and it's conservative based on Rob's metric. And he's nailed it pretty well, you know, each year at about ninety-nine percent accuracy. I am concerned about the birth rate in our county, and all birth rates here don't translate into Grand Forks Public School District kids. You know, we certainly saw the outmigration of some students around twenty, twenty-eighteen, when higher ed was cut right in the middle of a biennium. We saw U N D. lost, lose faculty, we lost students as a result of that. But there's also some optimism that may not be in this report, and there are some things that are happening in and around the Grand Forks Air Force Base, both in private industry and with the Air Force Base, that I may not be privileged to speak about, but it does give me hope that our numbers are going to grow. Some of those would be Grand Forks Air Force Base students, some of them would be our students here in Grand Forks, and then some could be in surrounding areas like Laramore, Emmerito, et cetera. Along, you know, probably what Rob has not calculated is this legislative session and voucher bills that are bouncing between, you know, both sides of the aisle, and that certainly is not helpful for our enrollment. So we'll be, you know, watching that very carefully and very closely, because that will have an net effect on our students. And really, when we look at our overall budget, what we start with is students in the center because they're what drive our foundation aid, they're what drive anywhere between sixty-five and eighty percent of our budget. And so with a student increase, that's good news, and with a student decrease, that plays to the negative on our part. So along with this, I think it's important to note that Dr. Lewis and Ms. Galach work with principals across the district on the in-district transfer request process. We have schools, you know, much like Rob has described, that are at capacity, where we wouldn't take new students. And we have some schools that could be at capacity at certain grade levels, but we could still take students. So we really try to work closely with parents and make that work for their schedule. But I can certainly see where we might have to be a little bit tighter at some of our campuses and not accept. And that doesn't always work well with parents who are the recipients of that news. So those are some of my takeaways. And the last one, which is always a scary topic to even bring up, because it usually is one of the three things that has a superintendent exited right out of a community, is talking about boundary line changes. So that could be in the very near future, you know, within the next three to five years, we may have to really look at that. And I'll just add one more commentary piece, because it ties into our referendum survey that we did last fall with the twelve hundred people who responded. And one of the questions was, in five years or more, approximately five years or more, would you support a new South End Elementary School? And the reception was pretty cool. And you can see on the heat map, that's where all the development is right now, or majority of the development. The other question was, would you support reinvesting in a North End Elementary School or building a new North Elementary School on the present site of one of the schools? And the response was much more favorable, but that doesn't mean that's where all the people are. So we have some competing interests in trying to figure all of that out.
Thank you. Before we let Rob go, any final questions for Rob before we let him go? See, and then, Rob, thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Yes, you're most welcome, and appreciate you guys trying to work through on this phone call, and we'll look forward to seeing you guys in person next year.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, well, let's move on to item six B. We have our Avid district coordinator, Dr. David Tack, here to give us an update on that, and it's on your electronic pages seventy-five through one-twelve, and it looks like he's got an entourage with him. I wasn't, I didn't realize he had an entourage coming, so.
President Lynn, members of the board, thank you for having us tonight. We are very grateful to be here to tell you all about Avid, advancement via individual determination. I'm here with fabulous human beings that will tell you about some great things that are happening at each of our campuses. Again, we are happy to have an informal presentation, so if you have questions or wonderings as we're clicking through slides, any of us are happy to pause and answer those at any time. So as we think about Avid, we think about systems and structures that allow us to be high reliability systems. And one of the things that you'll experience is anytime you're part of an Avid training or event, is they start with group norms. How do we operate? And Avid uses the A E I O U Y norms that are in your packet and also up on the screen. And it just allows us to all engage in collective learning together in a way that facilitates collaboration, risk-taking, and really our ability to be present and in the moment. Another system and structure that you'll note about Avid is that we're really clear about our purpose. And so tonight's purpose or essential question is, what is Avid? And how is the Grand Forks Public Schools Avid team working to systematically implement Avid at ten of our schools over the first two years of the implementation cycle? So that's what we'll be telling you about today, and by the time we're all done, we want you to be able to answer that essential question. So when we look at Avid, Avid has a mission. Its mission is to close the opportunity gap by preparing all students for college and career readiness and success in a global society. So what we did is we did some strategic planning as a district leadership team around what does that mission mean for Grand Forks Public Schools? So over the course of two days, a leadership team came together, business office staff, special ed, our superintendents, athletics was there, communications was there, curriculum and technology. And we went through some of the leading indicators of Avid, and we looked at where our current operational state is within the rubrics applied by Avid. And part of the exercises that they led us through as we were evaluating where we currently are, is we created a collective belief statement or mission for Grand Forks Public Schools, and that's what you see on your screen. Grand Forks Public Schools Avid elevates what we believe about teaching and learning through a structured framework that ensures academic rigor and equity so that all students graduate choice-ready. When we look at those indicators from Avid, as we decided, what is our priority? What are our first steps? This mission is what led that work. Within Avid school-wide, it's a strong system that they put in place with leading indicators or indicators that allow us to measure our success towards the implementation of Avid so that we can achieve our mission. There's four core areas of instruction, systems, leadership and culture, and within each of those, there are items that are measured and monitored by ourselves internally, but also our Avid leadership team that's outside of our district that helps support our implementation. Oftentimes, people ask us, how does this fit with what we're already doing? What does it mean for what we're already doing? And when we think about high reliability schools, H R S. is talking about the conditions that we need to have in place for our schools to be high reliability systems. So if something is going right, how do we sustain it? If there's an opportunity for change, how do we ensure that opportunity is seized and there isn't a system's failure? What Avid does is it comes in and it connects the how. How do you do those things? Within H R S., they give us leading indicators. They give us conditions that must be in place for a school system to succeed. Avid tells us how to do that. So that's a little abstract, but an example that you might want to think about is leading indicator one point seven talks about, how do schools acknowledge the success of the school as a whole and individuals within the school? Well, if we go back, two of the frames are leadership and culture. Within those frames, it talks about how we develop a culture that supports and celebrates students and staff and families, and then how leadership puts those into action. Another example would be H R S. leading indicator two point one. It talks about that the school leader communicates a clear vision and how teaching should be addressed and how instruction should happen. Well, when you get into Avid, one of the instructional components are the WICOR strategies, and that's how you have instruction or effective instruction within our schools. So H R S. again are the conditions, and Avid is how you do it. And now I will turn it over to the fabulous Dr. Tack.
Thank you again for this opportunity. I've had a lot of off-the-record remarks with Dr. Lynn at church and giving him updates, and it's nice to see Mr. Berger, I'm not introducing him, at the Betty Engelstedt-Sue Center, but it's a good opportunity to come here and do something that in my thirty years in teaching as a teacher, now as administrator, as a professor, as a K-12 consultant with the school district, this may be one of the most rewarding things I've done in thirty years of education, and it's not to belittle anything that I've done prior to this. WICOR, again, it's a lot, but this is the thread that goes through everything in what we do. If you look at those five questions there, these are some of the questions that our site teams at all ten of our schools will be asking themselves in seeing where are their strengths and where do they have those gaps? And then with Avid, we're allowed to have a systematic application, not just within the building, not just within the grade level, but throughout all of K-12. We're going to do something that we always want to do. We want to have a third grade teacher talk about an instructional strategy, targeting group work and focus notes, and have that conversation with an eleventh grade teacher to tell them, this is where they're coming from, this is what we need, and they understand each other before they even have the conversation. WICOR right here, which is also included in your packet, is writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization and reading. Everything teachers do already do this, this gives the system and the structure. All teachers think about this or know they should think about this. Avid gives us the system for how this can be scaffolded, starting in kindergarten with how they should take focus notes, to AP econ in Mr. Ellingson's class at Grand Fork Central. We'll have what they do in kindergarten to what they do in second grade, and we're going to give you, I want to be, I'm being rather quick here, because I want to show you the highlights of what we're doing. One quick reminder, I did not come on board in my position until July. If you look at the timeline, this is really the brainchild of Dr. Lewis, who's been a part of Avid in other districts. Avid isn't new. It's been around since the early eighties. And a lot of people, when you talk to them, either really, really know about it, or once you tell them about it, become really interested. I just moved over by the tech guys back there. They asked me what a lot of people in the district do. What do you do? We weren't sure. And so what did they do? They Googled it. And now all the tech guys, for forty-five minutes, they were like, this is the greatest thing ever. I wish we had this when I was in school. We were Googling this, and we thought, oh, this is a lot of fun, and how can we help? And can we be there? So I've got the tech team a hundred percent on board with us as well. Couple things about our, oh, thank you. That's wonderful. I need a lot of help. I want to give you this, so when we talk about people from, you know what we're talking about here. Our pilots were the crew that Dr. Lewis brought about a year and a half ago to Dallas to the national convention. Get your toes in the water, see what it's about, and this is so we can implement Avid to make sure it's sustainable and it's done with fidelity. We're looking at feeder programs to help, and that's one of the things that Avid continues to elevate in our district as well, too, is that we're being very purposeful in how we're implementing it. We started with Lake Agassy to Valley to Grand Fork Central. Part of it was that the student population lent itself well to what Avid was about, and two, it provided an early and easy feeder to that. We're going to show, we, tonight, we have representatives from Central and Valley right here with Katie Arthur and Lisa Voechek, and I will be filling in some of the gaps as well. We also have tier ones that will be starting for their year one. So also think about everything we're giving you today. We're not officially doing Avid yet. We are truly in the preparation stage. Next year is year one, and as I've gone to my national training, the national groups are looking at us, saying they're rewriting how they're thinking about Avid because of what's happening here. They're looking at us, I went to and explained, we're doing ten schools in two years, and this wonderful district director from down south looked at me, and she said, honey, you're nuts. And I said, we're ambitious, and we're set to go, and you should see our site team. Because what we're doing right now, she said, you have no business to be doing with the excellence you're doing right now. And so I want to get out of the way and let the people doing it. This is truly teacher leaders. We talk about empowering them, we're doing it. We got the philosophy, we get the right people in place, and then we get out of their way and let them do it. It doesn't mean we're not supporting, and it doesn't mean there isn't accountability, but we're definitely allowing these teams, and you should see how amazing they're doing this. So I want to step aside and let Katie Arthur and Lisa Voechek show you some of the things that are already in place at Valley and at Central. We also have things from Lake Agassy, from our other tier ones, Lewis and Clark and Wilder, who have come on board. Lewis and Clark and Wilder, about a little bit before Christmas, they came on board. But you want to see some of the systematic changes they already have implemented, schoolwide, led by the team. This isn't a David thing. This is an Avid thing, and it's especially that school thing. So they really, really need to be elevated, and that's what the hope is here today. So superstars, you're up here.
Phew, all right. Avid in action. Let's talk about year zero. So going back to this past summer, Lisa and I spent a lot of time this summer planning for this year to kind of lay a foundation before our actual year one of Avid. We're going to be talking about a couple different things here. So when we talk about Avid school-wide, that is separate from an Avid elective. Avid school-wide is things that we're doing school-wide, and the Avid elective class is referencing a new course that we will be offering next year. So those are the two terms I just wanted to kind of front-load here. During our summer planning, we talked about school goals, and we decided to focus on rigor and learning strategies that meet the definition of rigor, which you'll see later. We lined our work, we planned our site team meetings, we learned a lot more about what Avid could look like in our buildings, and used Avid as the how to align all of our initiatives in our buildings. We decided to start unfocusing on organization with using binders and planners in our schools. And then another thing that really helped us understand what Avid looks like is we traveled to Bismarck and saw the vertical alignment from what that looked like from elementary school to middle school and to high school. And looking at that really kind of solidified and helped us understand what Avid is. That, I would say, is a milestone in our journey in really understanding all of the different components that our job entails as the Avid site coordinators at our schools, but then also seeing and hearing from students at each building was really pretty awesome. We look forward to that partnership with Bismarck. They are incredible. What we've also learned is that Avid has a wealth of resources, a ton of support built within, an incredible regional team to rely on. In our buildings, we've seen that it's reinvigorated people who are excited about strategies and the idea of the Avid elective class and what it can do for students.
Such great energy. All right. We wouldn't be where we are right now without our site teams. So each site that Dr. Tack talked about has a whole team of people that are helping. Our site teams include counselors, they include administration, they include teachers, and a lot of different voices come to the table at once and help plan and implement. Valley's site team is pretty big. We have probably sixteen to eighteen teachers that meet, oh, one or two times a month, and we really align our work around our goals for organization in different WICOR strategies as well as rigor. We're really digging into that at our site. The nice thing about Avid is there is a ton of autonomy within your own structure, but that autonomy still kind of builds towards a common vision. So the CCI or the Coaching Certification Instrument really is our guide, but within that and what it looks like at each campus is really exciting.
If there's one thing I really appreciate about Avid is it's their professional development and their professional learning opportunities. They really practice what they preach. So when we are sitting in these conventions, we are learning all things Avid as they are modeling good instructional strategies for us. So it's a lot of bigger bang for your buck, and us educators really appreciate that kind of learning. So kind of to take you through our timeline as site coordinators of our journey, we, in 2021, we went to Dallas to the national convention where we were introduced to Avid, left there really excited, still not knowing really what Avid was, but we knew that we were excited, right? We couldn't see quite the vision yet, we weren't really clear of like, what is Avid? But we got excited by what we learned. That led to developing our site teams, creating those, and we went to a summer institute in Denver the summer of twenty-one, and that's where we started making our school year goals and planning for the year zero. Lisa and I spent a ton of time in the summer planning, trying to figure out all of the things. Avid has a ton of resources, and when I say, whenever we have a question, we always look at each other and says, Avid has it figured out. Like, Avid knows, we just have to dive deeper in. So we did that, and then we introduced, we did our P D. this year in front-loading a ton of strategies, which we will talk about in a bit. After that, we went to the national convention and introduced new site team members to Avid. What was really nice about that is that since we had a What was really nice about that is that since we had a foundation and a better understanding, we went to Bismarck, we really had that milestone moment of understanding, we were there to support them in their learning, so we could answer any questions for them on what it looks like at Central, or at Valley, or at Lake Agassy. After that, we did our recruitment in our AVID elective, and we're going to share that journey here in a minute as well. And then we are looking forward to our summer institute this summer with our site teams to plan for next school year. One thing at Central that I will mention is that our leadership team, we combined our HRS team and our AVID team to create a leadership team at Central, and we're working to intertwine the new art and science of teaching through Marzano with the AVID WICHER strategies to create a GFC instructional playbook. And that's going to be something that is going to take not just a week or two to finish. It's probably going to take all year, if not into the next year, but that process is so important, and we recognize that, and that is through our conversations with people at AVID.
I'll be Team Elementary, they're doing the exact same thing. They're redoing their instructional playbook to look at how WICHER can better inform the how of what they do. They're looking at, as well, they call them crosswalks. How does AVID be the how for Marzano? How is AVID the how for MTSS? And so on and so forth. So they're already getting to that part of their year zero, and you notice what they're talking about as well. It's not at Central, it's we, we, we. When they plan, they're thinking six, 12. It's not just Grand Fork Central, it's how can we do this six, 12? And tomorrow, we're having our summit, so we can talk to our K-12 plans as well. So that's truly the plan, and then they go back, as Lisa said, and implement as they want it there, at their sites. Was Dr. Brenner dancing or not in the picture? We are not supposed to say, but he was, we appreciated what he brought there on the left.
To say the professional learning that's come with AVID has been amazing would be a complete understatement. So it's been a very renewed sense of the work that we do in the classrooms and alongside teachers. Through a variety of different in-person and virtual trainings, we've really learned what it means to break down barriers. We've learned what it means to provide opportunities for all students. We've really dove into how we can provide academic opportunities. We address social, emotional, just how do we elevate kids and help them be successful once they leave our district?
It doesn't matter, it's fine with both. One of the things that we're doing is we're building, we do book studies, and oftentimes that I've been a part of very well-intentioned districts and say, let's do a book study, and you read, and you look around and go, okay, chapter one was great, and then you talk about the Vikings and their poor trade choices, and then you move on. These are really purposeful. They're doing each chapter, they're breaking it down, and they're asking, how does chapter one look in our school? How do these strategies fit with AVID? And now, even with the late additions to our Tier Ones with this book they're doing by Cornelius Minor, "We Got This," they're looking at specific strategies next year they can push schoolwide. It talked about better understanding the students we serve to serve them the best we can. And so the book study truly is not just reading a chapter and going, oh, that's interesting, or I like this paragraph. It's how does this paragraph inform what we need to do at Lake Agassy, at Central, at Lewis and Clark and the like? So that's what, and we brought the idea from what Lisa and her team did at Valley last year.
Yeah, so last year, in the spring, coming back from our, where we are conference, our winter conference, we gave teachers a choice between two books. They could choose Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain or Overcoming the Achievement Trap Gap. Ultimately, the themes and the way they overlaid one another was very tight and cohesive in our building. And from that work, we were able to build our vision for our building, our mission, and answer, what is our why? And that why work now is moving us forward into this next year.
I would say one of the biggest highlights you'll hear our teachers in our buildings talk about is our Speedy Peds. And what we did this year in February 16th, when we had kind of an in-building professional development day, we chose WICHER Strategy Speedy Peds. So teachers had seven or eight selections or choices to go to. They were 20 minutes, that's why the Speedy comes in. And then our AVID site team members led the session. So they were leaders, our teacher leaders. Here was some of the feedback we received from teachers after all was said and done. One said, "Today was an absolute awesome professional development day. It was by far my favorite PD I have attended since I've been in the district." Another one said, "I learned a lot and truly enjoyed the day. Awesome job." Another one said, "Not only was it interesting, but so applicable to my daily teaching." And this is kind of what rang true as we were kind of debriefing this in our buildings with our AVID site team, was that implementing professional development opportunities in our building, led by teachers, not only develops, like develops a culture of teacher leaders, but in our opinion is one of the best ways to create a path for school improvement.
Yeah, we've literally taken advantage of every opportunity we've had to share this with our staff, and to have our staff share it with each other, really elevating teachers who have been at these trainings, sometimes giving them an extra little nudge, a little boat of confidence. But it puts them in the driver's seat a little bit more, and being around their own peers has been really invaluable. Some of the feedback we got from our 16th PD at Valley, I love that AVID recognizes that without building, the building of relational capacity strategies fall flat. So really, all the things that we really value as teachers, we know that they have a place when it comes to delivering instruction. And when the relationships are there, we can increase their rigor and support students at all levels.
Building upon this relational capacity, one of the things with the professional development is you model and then slowly have a trickle into the classrooms. AVID energizes, they're a big AVID thing, and the first few times you do it, you get really, like me, I'm a Midwestern farm kid from East Grand Forks, and I'm, you know, the back of the church sort of guy. So I'm like, oh, okay, even as fired up as I am, but we do these fantastic claps, and they say to recognize, like my favorite would be up there, the rubber band, where you're celebrating kids do something well in class, you recognize, and you celebrate the little things and the big things. So you say, all right, let's rubber band, and you go, duh, duh, duh. And all the kids just go crazy over that. And what's funny is that they say that you'd have like high school AP teachers and go, oh yeah, our kids just like freak out if we don't do the AVID claps for them as well, too. They have like the salmon clap, which would be the, which is awesome, they do that, or I'm trying to think of the, oh, I was in an elementary classroom, and they said, as you're trying to get the kids back together, and they said, what does the dinosaur do? And they said, or what is the dinosaur who gets his fire put out doing? They all say, shhh. You know, and it's a system, it's kind of a catchy way of doing it, but they were doing this with the teachers and the PD, and as the site team leaders who go out, and we don't wait for the admins to go do this, who are part of this as well, but our site team leaders, you're going to see, go to classroom to classroom, the site teams go to classroom to classroom, and they truly help each other out and keep each other, help each other understand what to do. And they say as they're going from classroom to classroom, the teachers are now having these bits and pieces, these celebrations, aspects of WICHER are finding their way into the classroom as well.
Another thing that we've implemented this year is our site leader walkthroughs. So our site coordinators, our AVID site coordinators at our buildings walk into classrooms. What I did at Central was, it was an incentive for teachers, I offered some candy as well. Asked them to invite me in to learn right alongside them, since AVID is not my expertise by any means, I'm still learning. A ton of teachers invited me in, which was awesome. We learned right alongside of each other. What was really fun for me to see was teachers being risk-takers and trying something outside their comfort zone, in knowing that it was going to be, it could be really good for students and student learning. So this is our caught-using WICHER strategies that you see on the board.
Teachers do things for candy, but they also do things for memes. So a part of our culture and college and career culture work in our building has been college and career wear Wednesdays. So anytime a teacher participates wearing either their college gear, or they've now reached out to a lot of local businesses for career wear as well, they get a little meme from me, and they've kind of become a hot ticket item. So in our walkthroughs, kids see me coming in with my box, and they're getting their name put in there, the teachers are, and they're like, can I get my name in there? I wore my sweatshirt today. So it's really fun to see the kids really buying into it. The teachers, the memes are a big deal, and they've kind of been disappearing off the teachers' boards as kids decide they also would like a dabbing Mona Lisa.
One of the WICHER strategies that we really dove into this year in all of our buildings, elementary all the way through high school, like Dr. Tac had mentioned, was our focus note-taking. And really identifying and understanding as teachers and as peoples, as people and as students even, that our brain is wired to forget. And so in order for us all to retain information, we have to reengage in content 10 minutes after, 24 hours after, and seven days after, in order for us to fully retain our information. And so AVID gave us that, and AVID gave us those five phases of focus note-taking, which is something that we have, we at Central have dove into and will continue to dive into next year and the years to come. Why focus note-taking? That is the one that we chose. It can be done in any content area, even with performance-based classes, you can practice a skill, and it's just a different way of taking notes. We also know that it's so much bang for your buck. It's scaffolded, it's organized, and there's been a lot of success with teachers in using it, and that has kind of developed and broadened it a while.
Another strategy we've really put into place in our district, specifically at Valley, I know elementaries have also touched on this a little bit, are called one-pagers. So really, it's a way for kids to synthesize their learning on one page. They're drawing in key ideas, they're drawing in key vocabulary, maybe some quotations, key themes, idea, I said ideas, but like, a lot of times, the pictures is really what will hook a kid, and the connecting of the visual with the words to help them demonstrate their understanding.
The ones on the left are fourth grade at Lake Agassy, and you can see the complexity of that as well, those kids showing their, it links to the rigor, links to the writing, links to the collaboration, because they just don't do that and put it on the wall, they have to share with each other. It's basically, in my years in higher ed, it's like a poster project in fourth grade. And if you listen to the kids, they're amazing. They could tell you what's going on, they could tell you the resources, they understand what's happening, they're not just reading, they're engaged with it and they understand, and it's, and on the right there, you could see, those are all middle school outcomes that are just brilliantly done, and that's not unique. If you look at them, that's representative of many. We just didn't find one in the rest, they were so, so well-done.
Our counselors have also bought in, they've gone into classrooms for some of their visits, whole group visits. This was a set of one-pagers that our counselor did with some seventh graders the other day on colleges they might want to attend someday, and they did virtual tours of different campuses and put their information together on a one-pager and shared it. So really exciting. Socratic seminars is another focus of our building, we're just kind of kicking off with that one. It's a little more planning-heavy at times, but what it does is it really gives students a voice. This model right here is actually from Mr. Peterson's class, who's joined us in the back here, but this is the pilot, co-pilot, pilot model of a Socratic seminar. So the person in the front in the inner circle is doing the talking, while the person, people behind him are passing notes, asking other questions on their notes, handing them up. So all three people are fully involved in the conversation, maybe not with their voice being heard, but they're fully, fully engaged.
One of our starting points that we discussed in the summer was organization, and so both at Valley and at Central and in our elementary schools, we focused on planners. What we did was we created our, a group of our site team, our AVID site teams, created planners using AVID Common Language in hopes that that would help students and teachers alike. We created one for first semester, then we elicited feedback from students and teachers to see what was great and what was not so great, and how they wanted to change. We modified them for second semester, and then in return, we'll do that again this year, talking about what worked and what didn't work, with the overall goal that planners, we can't rely on our brains, right? They're wired to forget. And so we need these planners to be essential, and we need to help students develop these good organizational habits. GFC partnered with NextGrad. So you'll see on that page, there's a NextGrad, it's a kiosk, it's a free kiosk, and on this free kiosk, you'll see different surrounding colleges that display information from their college. It changes monthly. It allows us, they also allow us to display our own information, which will be much AVID information, or even internships, or college, or career-going things. What is pretty awesome about this company is NextGrad, after it's been in our building for a year, they will give, and it has to be in a high-traffic area, and this is in our commons, so it's very much, very much there. They will give us money, like $500 every year that we have this in our building, and we plan to use that funding for our AVID elective students when they are applying for college, or applying for internships, or any application fees that they need. We'll use that money directly for those students.
That bulletin board with the rocket ship used to have a U. I promise. It's also in a very high-traffic area in the middle school, so the U has gone missing. Part of our work this summer is we sent probably 1,700 emails, just an email blast to universities asking for free swag, and the number of pennants that came through our doors, the number of pens and pencils and different things is really exciting. And those are placed strategically throughout our building. Once we move into our AVID elective classes next year, they'll for sure be displayed in that room as well. We have outside of all of our classroom doors at Valley, and I know a couple of the elementary sites, now instead of just the teacher's name, it's a template that has the teacher's name, the college they graduated from. Some have gone in great detail of the picture of the teacher in their gown and things like that as well. So really promoting what comes after high school with our students.
So this is all well and good, but how do we systematize it? You could see a page out of our CCI, that kind of our accreditation document, that kind of, that gives us a game plan. There's a secondary one and an elementary one all around these same domains, that Instruction, Systems, Leadership, and Culture, that Mrs. Barch talked about at the onset. What we're doing is that we talk about teachers should set SMART goals, we're truly doing it. We're going to meet in that, and I'm putting this together, that's our next big site leader PD, starting in April for our second half of year zero. We're talking about identifying through going through the CCI, they've already done internal analyses of their buildings with the teachers and the admins alike to see where the strengths and the gaps are. They could probably put together, and they have, I've already seen them do that, but a list of possibilities that they want. We're going to target one key item, and that doesn't mean that we're not doing other things as well, but we're going to have one key goal. It's going to be measurable, there's going to be multiple points throughout the year where the teachers coming together in a true professional learning community, analyzing where they are, what artifacts do they have to show this, where are the strengths, where do we need to go back as teachers to support? Maybe we need to do some targeted PR. And then at the end of the year, we're going to go back, look at the goal, what was met, recalibrate, and set our sights to the future. It's truly doing, I mean, none of this should sound new, and I think that's why this program is such an easy sell to the teachers, because it's systematizing excellent teaching and excellent practices. And there's not a single teacher that thinks that this is a bad idea, and a lot of it is just, finally. I mean, we know we need to do it, but this is the how. I've always wanted, and I mean, no teacher sets out to say, boy, I wonder how I can make this the worst learning environment for kids? But they go in, they're like, I just don't know what to do, and how can we make sure also that we just don't have pockets of excellence? We have those two or three great teachers, and unless you have them, you're not going to get the rigor, or the writing, or the reading to learn. And here, it systematizes, it gives us examples and scaffolds. We know what, as an 11th grade teacher, what came before, and I can have those conversations when we meet to plan how that looks. And so we're going to be setting that up for SMART, and you could see that that will carry over with the expectations in other areas as well.
So we're going to, the last thing we're going to share is about this AVID elective class, a new section or a new course that's coming to Grand Fork Central and to Valley Middle School. It's a class for students who have realized or unrealized potential to take rigorous classes. The AVID elective course will help students be organized, learn the foundational WICHER strategies, they'll learn about themselves, their strengths, their weaknesses. There'll be tutorial days where students will get together and talk about their points of confusion in those academic classes. There will be campus tours, that's part of this course, is they take two a year, so if they're in the AVID elective class, ninth grade year, typically they would take it all through high school. As we know, that as students get older, sometimes choosing different elective courses in our building are okay and encouraged, so sometimes they don't get all of those campus tours, but there'll be two each grade level. The class itself is pretty rigorous, and then as well as a lot of fun, as AVID is kind of, I don't know if you can tell with all of us, but AVID is pretty fun. We really enjoyed it. So in order to select the right population or to get, we had to do some like recruitment from our middle school, school feeder schools to Central. So what Dave, Lisa, and I did is we went to Twining, we went to Valley, and we went to Schrader, and we talked to middle school eighth-grade teachers and telling them about what AVID elective course is, and the characteristics of the student population that would be in this course. Those eighth-grade teachers then made recommendations. Those eighth-grade teachers then made recommendations. We went back to those schools and talked with all of the students who were recommended for this Avid elective class. After that, they had to apply. Typically, they'd have to interview, we didn't do interviews this year, but they'd applied. Our site team and our administrators and our counselors got together, we talked through all the applications, and there was a ton of applications. I think at Central's alone, there was about seventy applications for maybe only two sections. And so we sent out acceptance letters, and we also sent out waitlist letters. So they weren't denied, they're on the waitlist for if a spot came available. But the most fun part about this is our signing days. So just like you would sign your National Letter of Intent, we had students and their parents or guardians sign an Avid elective contract. And in that contract, it just said that you are, you were, you have to maintain these certain things to be in the academic, in the Avid academic class, the Avid elective class. We went to Valley last Friday, we go to Schrader tomorrow morning, and Twining on Wednesday to finish it up, but it has been one of the highlights of our year.
All right. I'm going to read this one word-for-word to kind of wrap it up. But to say that the application process for this elective class has been inspiring and validating would be an understatement. We've had many application vignettes that have also shaped our school-wide work with Avid. Watching confidence blossom out of possibility has literally brought us to tears on more than one occasion. Watching students sit a little bit taller, engage a bit more, and dig in a bit deeper. This work is all about the students. It has always been about closing gaps, providing opportunities, and breaking down barriers, all while providing them with the tools they need for both today and when they leave Grand Forks Public Schools. So, as stated earlier, one of the foundational pieces of Avid, of Avid is relational capacity. It's teachers connecting with students, meeting them where they are at, having high but attainable expectations of them, providing them with the tools they need to meet these expectations, and then of course, being their number-one cheerleader. Pictured here are Grand Forks Public Schools' first-ever Avid elective teachers, and they are the true embodiment of all that I have just described. Mr. Nick Peterson will be teaching the eighth-grade Avid elective at Valley. And Ms. Becca Lord will be teaching one of the two sections at the elective at Grand Forks Central. Both of them are dynamite teachers who are more than equipped and also very excited about this opportunity, as are their students. So, before we turn it back to Dr. Tack, we have to make sure to thank him. Dr. Tack has been an instrumental member of our team, and he's been an incredible leader of all things Avid at GFPS.
Since day one, he has rolled up his sleeves, met us where we are at, and cheered us on. He's a true leader in every sense of the word, and he will thank everybody else but himself. So we wanted to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Tack.
That was not in the final cut, that was just rude, right there, no. It's an all-star team, it truly is. You see why after thirty years, and I've taught at some amazing schools and worked with districts that I'm so proud to be affiliated with. This is the best, this is exactly, this is everything good in education, synergized, elevating the teachers to do the meaningful work. And you walk into the schools and it's, and it's pure bliss. And to bring on those ten schools on board, I'm getting a little gray in my beard with those ten schools, but it's fun, it's a true labor of love, and they're doing amazing work. And when we pitched this to the principals, they were excited. It wasn't, oh, another thing, it was truly, when do we start? And we've also heard, can we be a part of it? How can we be a part of this? And I want to say that we're not excluding any schools by choice, again, it's that sustainability and fidelity. Most districts, here gets back to Avid, they do one section of the Avid elective at one high school for four to five years. Figure out what that looks like, and then think about within that one school. We're doing ten, school-wide, with the Avid elective in two years. To go back to that district director, honey, you're nuts! Nah, I've got an all-star team, we're an all-star team, and we just really thank you for your support and your continued support. But if any questions you may have, we're all very excited to field them as well, too.
Thank you, wonderful presentation. I know a lot more about Avid than I did before the presentation. I'll open it up to clarifying questions, comments from board members. Go ahead.
I don't really have any questions, but I just have to say it's hard to not be excited hearing that presentation. I think just knowing that our district is poised to have so many opportunities for our students, especially in the career readiness and college readiness as we look at our Career Impact Academy, and it just is really exciting for educators to have additional opportunities to grow their skillset as well. And so I was going to ask if Dr. Brenner was in a dance circle, so I'm glad you kind of alluded to it, but thank you so much for your presentation. It was, it was great, and I'm looking forward to annual or biannual updates as you implement.
I have one quick question, you talked about going to Bismarck. Are there other school districts in North Dakota that are Avid school districts that, because, because I'm always one of those that, well, you can collaborate, you can cooperate, you can find out, how did you do this, how did you do that? You mentioned Bismarck, which sounds like it must be an Avid district. Are there other, other districts in North Dakota or Northwest Minnesota?
Sorry, there, there's a few, but Bismarck's truly the ones that have been doing it to the degree that we want to emulate. Some will just do that Avid elective. I think West Fargo has just dipped their toes in the Avid elective. The Bismarck High principal comes from West Fargo, and he brought his excitement about Avid to Bismarck and really started to implement it system-wide. Bismarck's probably in about year ten of what they're doing, so we're really seeing again that system that we want to emulate K-12 to that degree. I want to say that Mandan may have had some, West Fargo, but really, it's very, very few. Minneapolis is very, very robust, from where they have, a lot of schools have been doing it twenty-plus years, if not more, close to the nineteen-eighties. But really, we're geographically and metaphorically the North Star up here as well, but, yeah.
Thank you. Other clarifying questions, comments? Dr. Shab, Dr. Shab, go ahead.
Yep, thanks. So, full disclosure, I go quite a ways back with Dr. Tack, so I'm a big fan of his. But I wanted to ask, I, I'm just, I'm still not clear, like, it's an elective, so how do, and maybe you said this, but I've been trying to follow. How do the kids get invited to attend? And with that question comes a little bit of, we don't want to create the haves and the have-nots, right? So that, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
So it's a great question. It, it is rather exclusionary because it is targeting a specific population. They use a term I don't like, but it's kind of a great way of seeing it. They, they want the academic middle. The Avid elective, Avid school-wide is for all kids, and that's why we're talking about that. They will get WICHER strategies, they will get parts of Avid, and the focus notes, the organizational strategies, the collaboration, that's happening school-wide. The Avid elective is targeting those kids who I like to describe, especially in middle school. They're very, very capable, but school just slowly starts pulling away from them. They have the capacity, and when we interview or we ask the teachers, and we, we've dubbed them the teacher champions, we're looking at kids that absolutely could and should be in AP classes, but where they're doing assignments that should take maybe forty-five minutes, they're getting A's by doing two hours. And by a few more supports that the Avid elective does, it gives them the supports. Oftentimes, they're, they're students who demographically are underrepresented in our advanced classes as well. So there is purposefully targeting as well, we're targeting, not, I shouldn't say targeting, that sounds, but we're really emphasizing students that come from families that they might be first generation, the possibility being a first-generation college student. So creating that sense of this is a possibility, and they can go, and it is there. But it's not just college, it's college, it's career, and it's military, we say all three. And we just say that ultimately, it's not our choice, it's theirs. And we want to start early on to see where their strengths, what could be a possibility, where could they go, and we're going to champion them wherever they're going to go as well, too. So it truly, it's not, you saw the pennants and whatnot, too, but it really is college, career, military, but giving them the most, I taught seniors for years. And second semester of senior year is way too late to start thinking about what you want to be when you grow up. So Avid really helps a lot of those kids do it, as does the school-wide. Did I do that okay, team? All right.
Any other clarifying questions? I have just one. Dr. Tack, have you ever thought that the only thing missing with Avid is a D? You got to think about that, guys.
The Avid national team calls me D.Avid, and it's all right. They get a good gig out of it, too, so yeah, I'm the, I'm D.Avid, yep. That's how I got the gig.
Good.
He sent him a picture of the Avid icon, and then he sent the fact with a D written on it.
I'm subtle, that's the.
Dr. Lewis, Dr. Brenner, do you guys have any comments you want to make? Go ahead, Dr. Lewis.
I just want to say that it's been wonderful to turn this over and see it thrive.
Well, thank you, and I, I think we all echo Amber in that we look forward to future updates and future, and also really hearing from the students. We want to run into students out in the community, that's what I'm really looking forward to.
I just want to encourage you to go to these schools when you get the opportunity and ask. The site teams will absolutely, you should see it already. Again, we're not year one, you saw nothing from year-one implementation. This is true preparatory work, we're not really into Avid yet, and we're scary good at what's going on at these schools. So please, go see them, walk in, see what, sit in the class, because that's the expectation. We'd love to have you there.
Well, thank you, D.Avid and the rest of the gang, and I appreciate it. You have a good evening. Let's, let's move on to item 6C, which is legislative update. Dr. Brenner has an update, and I think he's got a handout here, he's looking at me to hand out, so.
Yes, sir, we have some coming to the left and some going to the right. So I'll just wait for everybody to receive those, and if you, Dr. Shab has one electronically. Cindy has sent her one by email. And in case you don't know, if I haven't had a cup of coffee in the morning, Dr. Tack, when I run into, when I run into him, he's my caffeine. We're always off to a good start at MSCC. So I appreciate his work along with, with the team members who are here tonight. So I'll, I'll skip over the memo because it was brief, and it's just basically drawing your attention to the latest NDSBA legislative update, that update that came out last Friday. So I would draw your, I'm going to draw your attention to about twelve, maybe thirteen bills that we're taking a look at. So if you go to the second page, please, House Bill 1491, second one from the top. This bill would provide an appropriation of six million to the Superintendent of Public Instruction to provide grants to schools for meals for students. And if this is anything attached to what just came out of the Senate today, the Senate bill did not pass for, as far as breakfast and lunch allowances for certain populations of students. So there's a little bit of overlap between the House and the Senate, but I'm not optimistic that, that there's going to be some support for some of our students. If you drop down a couple to House Bill 1532, this bill creates an educational reimbursement program for students attending non-public schools and establishes it under the Superintendent of Public Instruction in which twenty-four million would be appropriated for students who do enroll in non-public schools. This is the voucher bill that we've been tracking, that is not supported by the North Dakota Council of Educational Leaders, North Dakota School Board Association, North Dakota United, but it seems to have great traction. And for, for us, for every student who would depart our school district, and, and that money that would follow them, even if it's only at thirty percent of that ten grand, the other seven thousand goes back to the state, so we lose. We lose ten thousand per student. So from my perspective, it's, there, there is a blurred line between, between separation of church and state, and there's an encouragement for, for parents to seek education elsewhere other than what I would call the Great Experiment, and that's public education. If you would go on to the next page, please. The last one before you get to the extracurricular activities, House Bill 1398. This one did pass, requiring school districts to develop a plan for computer science and cybersecurity curriculum, integration of one unit, and change already in stated requirements. So this is something that we will have to do, and I doubt that any money is going to follow that for implementation. If you would turn over to the next page, and I'm sorry that we're doing legislative update after the Avid presentation, I mean, this, this is setting me up for failure completely. Onto the next page, under Personnel and Licensing. The third one from the bottom, Senate Bill 2070. This bill allows a school district to authorize a teacher licensed in a specialty area to teach for four additional years, up to a maximum of seven, if they're enrolled in a teacher education program. So this will help with our shortage, so we see this as an opportunity. Please go to the next page. Right about halfway down, I'll just clump together House Bill 1522 and Senate Bill 2231. First of all, 1522, the bill prohibits a board of a school district, public or private, or a teacher in a public or private school from adopting a policy or taking part in action that caters to a student's perceived or expressed gender, including preferred gender pronoun if the perceived or expressed gender is inconsistent with the student's sex. We have a policy in place, we have an administrative regulation that's in place, and it's likely that we would have to redact that when this goes through. The second one, Senate Bill 2231, this bill relates to, to the preferred pronoun discriminatory practices in school policies on expressed gender, preferred pronoun, and discriminatory practices, practice definitions. It would prohibit school districts, public schools, and teachers in public schools from teaching, providing teacher training, or adopting a policy or practice regarding expressed gender, meaning gender identity that does not conform to the student's biological sex. But we can't pass a lunch bill. Yeah, I'm a little emotional on that, if we can't protect our kids. If you go to the next page, under Miscellaneous, House Bill 1120 just has to do with the Pledge of Allegiance. And the only piece that we worry about, we say the pledge here. Students are given the opportunity to say the pledge at school. It's, it's the requirement that it needs to happen at the start of the school day. The start of the school day starts differently for many of our kids, particularly at high school and even at middle school, when some kids have zero hour. Then you got first hour, we have late starts. So our concern is the required practice sort of mandate, and what, what happens if we miss it? What happens if we miss it on a ten o'clock start? So we're, we're worried about that. We're not worried about the Pledge of Allegiance, we do it here, and we do it in our buildings. A couple down, House Bill 1205, this bill prohibits public libraries from maintaining sexually explicit books or materials. That one's been a little bit all over the place. So we'll see how that, that formality is going to take place and what that will mean for our libraries, and how we need to place some of our books, which we already do, that, let me just say this for our listening audience at home. There's this propagated perception that, that school districts, in particular, our school district, are promoting pornography. And, you know, when you, when you think about pornography in its, its general sense, that simply isn't the case. We have books that, there are some probably explicit references to sex, and that might be four pages out of a four-hundred-and-fifty-page book. It's part of the book. So for people to attack our school district or public education or libraries in general for promoting that, it's still a matter of choice. And parents do have the ability to participate, we have a process to go through. If parents don't want their, their student to have access to certain materials, then we take care of that at the building level. So there's probably going to be a price tag associated with that one. If you go down to Senate Bill 2223, this one is great news, I can smile on this one. It's exciting because it has to do with our Grand Forks Air Force Base Board, and in particular, our membership of Michelle Shepherd and Brandon Shepherd, who are going to be finishing up their tour of duty on base, they're wonderful board members, and just because their residence takes them off-base, it would disqualify them from being a board member. So this is going to give us lots of latitude to make sure that people can apply, people can be encouraged, and this is really going to be helpful for us at the Air Force Base. So thank you, President Shepherd, for your work behind the scenes with Senator Meyer, thank you for that. Third one from the bottom, Senate Bill 2351. This bill would require public schools to report monthly to the Superintendent of Public Instruction and the Executive Director of the Department of Health and Human Services on classroom and hallway clearings. We're concerned that reporting monthly is a little ambitious. It might end up being quarterly. It could be at the end of the school year. We have that information. We collect that information. We have nothing to hide. We just don't think we need to do it monthly. I'm on to the next page.
Can I just ask you a question? What does hallway clearings mean? Does that mean keeping the hallway clear of obstruction? Or what does that mean?
No, I think the way they've written it isn't quite accurate. This would really have to do with classroom clearings. If there's a dysregulated student, rather than try to move the student, we move the classroom. So, we're not moving hallways. All right, now we're on to the next page. 1187, about midway down. This gives us the opportunity to pay out bonuses for hard-to-fill positions. We don't have any policy in place or practice in place. It's just there in the event that we want to have a policy. And House Bill 1199, I think you're all aware that the governor did sign the declared emergency to get the grant monies to us for Career Impact Academy. What this does not address is still the inflationary piece that you're all aware of. We're still about eight or nine million apart from the initial design a year and a half ago to what we would actually need. So, I know Mr. Bonbuck and Eric Ripley have worked hard at putting together those numbers, those finite numbers, because our legislators want to know what those numbers are, so they can at least have conversations and hopefully move this forward. We'll see where that ends up. And if you go to the next page, House Bill 1386. I think this is going to be the last one that I'll share with you tonight. This law eliminates the mandated eight-hour minimum of youth behavioral health development under professional development. We've had to do it eight hours every two years, and it does really constrict how we use our professional development time, so there's a little more flexibility. So, that's a win for us. So, I will stop there, and there might be some bills you had hoped to hear about tonight, but those were the ones I wanted to put in front of you.
Clarifying questions or comments from board members. Amber.
I'll try to keep my comments brief. I wrote a couple of notes here. If Dr. Brenner wasn't clear enough in sharing what he shared, there's a large majority of bills this session that I believe are an attack on public education. And I think as a board, it would be beneficial for us to talk about what our role could be moving forward. Because of the structure of our legislative session every two years, I don't believe it gives enough opportunity while in session in that short time of 80 days to be able to educate our legislature and have those conversations about why some of these bills would be hurtful, why some of these bills would be absolutely helpful. And I, for one, am just very frustrated. I'm frustrated that I believe that we're not being advocated for by some of our local legislators. That's coming from me, no one else. I'm frustrated that our focus is on trying to put more work on educators, to take less of their power away to just teach in the classrooms, that we can't help students and provide them with a meal, that we are attacking individual students based on their status of who they are in some people's eyes. Being a student who identifies as transgender is very hard these days, and if no one has told you, you matter and you're important. And I think that we, as a district, are trying to do all we can under the confines of our state legislature and the rules that they're making, and I'm very frustrated at the point where we're at. I think we should maybe look at, as a board, having an interim legislative committee where we're having ongoing conversations with our legislators, so we're providing them with more information on some of these bills, because they're clearly short-sighted. I would encourage other board members who have questions or concerns at any time to use these as discussion opportunities, but also to say that we care about our students. And it's not right that we're picking at students who can't fight for themselves. Dr. Lund said today, at the beginning of our meeting, he gave his condolences to our school in Tennessee. My daughter came home last week and said that she had to hide under a table because she was practicing what she would do if someone with a gun walked in her classroom, or if someone was in her class or her school that was going to hurt her. And there's three nine-year-olds that were killed in Tennessee today. My daughter's not. I can't imagine getting a call as a parent or hearing from our educators that they just have to go back to school tomorrow. Instead, we're focusing on taking lunch away from students or making their families pay for it, who can't afford it. We're banning books in our libraries. We're telling people that they don't matter and that they don't need accommodations. And we're not talking about safety and security at all in our schools. It's not okay. And as an elected official to another, I hope they're listening, because it's not right. We have the opportunity on our board and our local school district to fight for our kids every single day, and I want to empower this board that if there's gaps in the way we're doing that, then we should work together with the district to figure out how we can do that better. Dr. Brenner and his team can only do so much, and if we can help fill in the gap and advocate and have conversations with our legislature or make it known in the public that we don't agree with some of the things that are going on, then we should do a better job at that. And so, I think we should consider in the future what that looks like. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I'll just add a couple of things. There are some things we can do. There's some things we can do now. There's some things we can do in the future. One of the things that we've talked about in the past is having a legislative committee as one of our committees. We've got finance committee, we've got other things. I think that's something we should strongly think about. That's for the future. That's too late for this session. One thing that you, as individual board members, and anybody in the public can do is to contact their local legislators. We get through the North Dakota School Board Association. We get the contact information. So, if any board members feel strongly about these, I would encourage them to reach out and talk to, you know, email their legislators about their thoughts. You know, I hate to say it, but it's true. Sometimes the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and unfortunately, the silent majority don't ever get heard from, and there is a huge silent majority out there on some of these subjects. And then the third thing, and it's specifically with regards to safety and security, there is something we can do about it. We have a referendum on May 16th to try and improve the safety and security. Some people think that we have not done anything about safety and security in our school districts actually since Columbine, '98, '97, '99. There has been ongoing safety and security upgrades, but we need to make a stronger investment. You know, like I mentioned, 19 school shootings in the U.S., more than one a week. All those school districts talk about it'll never happen in our school district, and it's happened in a lot of them. So, that's one thing that we can do, is encourage improvement in our safety and security. So, I will open it up if anybody else has any other thoughts, questions, comments about any of the bills that have been talked about. Dr. Shab, I'll turn to you, because I can't hear, see you. So, do you have any questions or comments?
Not particularly, no. I would appreciate, I do appreciate Amber's and your comment. I think that it is time for us to have a legislative committee in the future, and I have been feeling most worried about the safety and security piece for the referendum after having attended Valley's open forum, and I did have to leave early, because I had another commitment at seven. But that was the piece that I wasn't prepared for as a board member, to hear that people weren't on board with that totally. So, I do think we need to get a plan to get that better articulated, and I appreciate, again, Amber's statement. These bills with the transgender policies are undoing what we spent quite a bit of time doing, and that's very concerning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member questions, comments? Thank you all. Let's move on then to item seven, which is superintendent's recommendations for action. We have the audited financial statements for the year, electronic pages 114 through 228. Brandon.
Thank you, Dr. Lund, members of the board. Very happy to bring this forward. We have a presentation tonight by Amanda Skansen, CPA Brady Martz, the presentation of both the audited findings for District 1 as well as District 140. Just one comment, too. I think in most, in normal years, we'll get this wrapped up just a little bit sooner than this point, and for this reason, we did bypass, or with the permission of the Finance Committee, we didn't bring it to the Finance Committee prior to the full board. We are meeting the deadline for federal reporting timeline. But part of the reason for that, too, is just some of the new faces, such as my own in the business office, and so we've learned a lot, and we'll do, we'll get this done even sooner next year. So, without further ado, I'll hand it over to Amanda to walk us through the findings from the audited reports.
All right, so I think in your board packet, you have District 1 first. So, am I right that you wanted us to go through some of the numbers and just kind of scan through the report, like we would kind of on the Finance Committee meeting? Yep, okay.
No, I appreciate that, and I should apologize. Brian Obstall was going to come and has fallen ill under the weather here, too.
Yes.
But, yeah, we talked through, walking through some of those higher points.
Perfect.
And standing for any questions, of course.
So, sounds good. So, if you do have any questions, feel free to stop me at any point, and it's kind of hard to go back sometimes. I don't think in your packet you have what we would normally have as a communication with council at the end of the audit, so I'll just go over brief highlights of what they are, just states any new accounting policies that were adopted this year, which we did have one, a lease standard. So, that affected District 1, but not the airbase. It talks about any estimates that are in your report. So, the largest estimate is due to the TFFR plan that you were in. It also discusses any difficulties that we had with management, and we had none. Your staff is great to work with. We didn't have any disagreements about any, how to implement anything. We did have some journal entries this year that the note, that'll note in there, and it just talks about any, some other supplementary information that you'll find in the report. So, I'm not sure the easiest way to do this, since you guys have them in PDF, so I'll go through some highlights of it. So, on page two of the report is our independent auditor's report. The layout has changed a little bit from where you've seen it in the past. So, right on top is our opinion of the financial statements. So, we've issued a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the best opinion that you can get from us. It also has in there, we have some emphasis of the matters. So, we did have the implementation of the new lease standard, GASB 87, and then we also had a prior period adjustment, as there was an error in the capital asset amounts in the prior years, just based off of the listings. So, we've corrected for that, but we didn't modify our opinion for that. So, it's correct in the current year's statement. It also goes through some responsibilities of management and responsibilities of the auditors, and talks about different supplementary information. So, then on page six of the financial statements is the management's discussion and analysis, and it's probably a 10-page read, and it's pretty easy. If you wanted just the general, how did the year go? It's just a verbal context of how the year went. I'm going to skip over it, but it is probably the easiest part to read in the financial statements, so if you wanted to read any part, that would be my suggestion. On page 13 is the statement of net position, and that is basically your balance sheet on a full accrual basis. So, you're going to find your capital assets and all of your debt on these books, whereas your finance office generally keeps things on a modified accrual basis. So, on this statement, you'll see the implementation of the new lease standard, too. There's two different lines. There's a right to use leased assets, and then a lease payable. So, in the past, any of your operating leases, where you've leased buildings or things like that, they've been footnoted, but there's no payable and asset in your financial statements. So, this year, the new standard required us to go through some processes to figure out what the value of your operating lease is, and then what you'll ultimately end up paying for that. So, those are now on your books. The other note I did write down is, so in case anyone's curious, your cash position from current year to prior year is down slightly. It's down 673,000, so it's currently at 17.8 billion. And the other item on their financial statements that's pretty different from the prior year is your federal receivables, or it's actually in your accounts receivable line, and that's mainly due to federal receivables, and it's S R.2 and S R.3. So, you spent the money by year-end, but the federal government or the state where it's passed through just hadn't given you the cash for it yet. So, it's just on there as a receivable. The other note I had is on the very bottom of the page is unrestricted net position, so that is a large negative number, but as Brian has probably pointed out in the past, that net pension liability for your involvement in TFFR really creates some interesting numbers on here, as it creates this deferred inflow and deferred outflow and a pension liability, which you can't actually pay off. So, if you take that off, your net position overall goes from that 4.7 million to 93.3 or 92.3 million. So, those numbers swing drastically annually, and it's really, it's kind of hard to see on these financial statements. So, I'd just like to unwind it and see what happens there. On page 14, you'll see the prior period adjustment amount of the capital asset amounts that were incorrect in the prior year, and that was just, numbers were duplicated, so it was just an error on the spreadsheet that was found this year. So, that has been corrected for now. And then on page 15 is the balance sheet in the modified accrual basis. So, we don't have any long-term assets or long-term debt on here, so this is what you would normally see in your board packets for, on a regular basis. And page 17 will have the income statement version of the same thing, so what you would normally see. So, your total revenues from current year to prior year are up about 7 million, and that's mainly due to intergovernmental revenue, mainly due to S R. funds and COVID dollars. Your expenditures are also up about 5 million, and that was actually mainly due to paying off the debt that you had. There was a large payment from a refunding bond that was paid off this year, and those funds were in escrow in the past. On page 19 is the statement of net position for your proprietary funds, which is your internal service fund for your health insurance. So, that just will, 19 shows your balance sheet, and 20 shows your income statement for that, and your cash position is down slightly, just due to your claims being higher in the current year. So, on page 20 starts the notes to the financial statements, and there should be a note for almost every number that you'll find on the statement of net position, and it talks about how that number was arrived at, and some different details, but unless there's a question on one of them, we'll skip over all of them, and we'll go to, page 54 is your budget-to-actual information. So, your budget-to-actual is pretty close. Your budgeted, your revenues were over of your budget by 8 million, and the majority of that is due to federal revenue, and those are really hard to predict, what you're going to get by the time you're creating your budget, to the time it's, the dollars are kind of... And those are really hard to predict what you're going to get by the time you're creating your budget to the time it's, the dollars are coming through. And then your expenditures were really close. They were within one point two percent of your budget. So that, it's great to see that your budgeted line items or expenses are really being monitored closely. So then I will skip to page fifty-nine, and this is our report over internal controls. So annually, we are required to review your controls in your accounting department to see if there's anything that we would suggest are done differently, or you just give some insights that can lead to management comments where we just say things should be looked at in a different way or things like that. Or we can give findings. So this year, we've given two findings that you haven't seen in the past, but we've considered them significant deficiencies. We can give two levels of findings, significant deficiencies being the better of the two, and then material weaknesses being a little bit more pervasive of an issue. So I will talk about those findings in just a minute. The next one on page sixty is our report over the single audit. And we did not have any findings over the single audit, which is great. On page sixty-four is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. So that would be what we performed our single audit over. And this year, we tested two major programs. We tested your special education cluster and the child nutrition, nutrition cluster. And those programs change every year. There's some large formulas on how we determine which ones are going to be tested. But we have to cover certain amount of expenditures, and then there's some rotation going on as well. So your federal funds were up quite a bit from the prior year, and that was again mainly due to the S R funds. So on page sixty-eight is going to start the findings. So I want to preface this with, these two findings that you received are very common for lots of school districts and governmental entities in general. You haven't had them in the past due to previous employment that had CPA license and was able to write financial statements. So they're not set in stone. They could go away. They're, they're just here this year. So the first one is the proposition of journal entries. So we did have a few journal entries this year. So we did need to add a finding for that. But honestly, lots of school districts have that. So it's, it's not unusual at all. And then the next one on page sixty-nine is report preparation. Again, a very common finding that lots of school districts have. We are allowed to write your financial statements every year, but if you have someone on staff that can do it themselves, then we don't have to issue that finding. So we can do it upon, for convenience, but as long as, if you, I'm sorry, I lost my breath. But if you had someone on staff that could do it, then we don't have to issue that finding. And that is it for the District One. So then District one forty, the airbase.
Can I, can I stop you just a second?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Just, just to ask if, if any board members have any questions about the, about the District One audit before we move on to the District one forty? Go ahead, Bill.
Just a comment. I think I talked to Brandon before, and he's not listening, but that's okay. But the point is that we're on schedule as we put ourselves on schedule with the ending balance at the end of the year was over the ten million mark. And we, we're still working our way to follow that, hit that fifteen percent hopefully in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, right in that area. Correct?
You're absolutely right. I had nothing more to add because it's, it's factual. So it was, it was a good audit the way it came back. And again, that's kudos to this board and prior administration to setting that course.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, let's, now we can move on to one forty. Thank you.
Perfect. No problem. All right. I don't have too many comments on one forty, and some of it's duplicated. So page two again is our opinion. Again, we issued a clean, unmodified opinion, and we don't have any emphasis of a matter paragraphs here because the lease standard didn't apply here only because they didn't have any items that, that were rented that would go under the lease standard. So if they did in the future, it would apply. On page five starts the management's discussion and analysis. This one's shorter. So again, if you're looking for an easy read, that would be what I would suggest. On page ten is the statement of net position, and it's significantly smaller than the District One. So your, your cash position was up slightly over the prior year. It's up one hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And your due from federal governments is also up quite a bit. It's up one hundred and twenty-three thousand. Again, that's just expenditures during the year that hadn't been collected from the federal government for your federal programs. And on page eleven is the income statement. So your, your expenditures are very close from what they were in the prior year. The, the only main difference is that in the prior year, you had spent more in capital L A. Other than that, they're very close to what you had done in the prior year. Your revenue was down a little bit, but impact aid is based on various factors. So it makes sense that that will change annually. And then page fourteen starts the notes to the financial statements. So again, they're going to have everything, notes to all of the numbers on the statement of net position. And we will skip over them to page twenty-six where we have the budget to actual. And I didn't really have very many notes. Your budget to actual was, was very close. Again, your, your budget for federal revenues was higher, but it's hard to know what those are going to be. So that makes perfect sense. So not a lot to say there. And then on page twenty-eight is your schedule of expenditures of federal awards, or your CFA. And we tested impact aid. For the airbase, it's pretty much always going to be impact aid unless something else pops up that's very large. But so that's the program that we test there. And on page thirty, we have our internal control, report over internal control. So just like the District One, we do have one finding, and that is just the financial statement prep. There were no journal entries found within District one forty, so we didn't need to issue that, that finding over here. And then on page thirty-two is our report over the single audit. And again, we had no findings, so it's great to see everything was good in that front. On page thirty-six is the, that one finding that I mentioned for the financial statement preparation. And that is all I had for District one forty. Any questions on that one?
Questions? No questions, sounds like.
All right. Well, if you think of anything later, feel free to contest us and we will find them out.
So Brandon, you want approval for both districts, the statement, is that?
Yes, we'd be seeking your approval. This is still watermarked draft until you accept this. And it, it was through a final stage at Brady March for some of their internal process. There'd be no expected changes beyond.
No, it's currently waiting for signature. So it's ready to go.
Yes, so seeking the, the board's opinion on approving that, and then we would get that report sent off.
Okay. Do you have any final questions, comments? If not, the recommendation is to approve the two reports. Can I get a motion? Motion from Bill, who have a second. Second from Josh. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you for being here and pinching it. And that's got to be always fun to find out at four in the afternoon or whenever you found out. So thank you. Well, that's good. That helps. I appreciate that. Thank you. Let's move on to item seven B, which is the Head Start fifth year of the five-year contract renewal. It's on electronic pages two twenty-nine through two sixty-two. We have our Head Start Director, Tracy Johnson, here today. Tracy, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. The Grant Forks Head Start Program received a confirmation letter from the Department of Human Services that we could apply for the fifth year of our five-year grant with the total of two million, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, eight hundred and twenty-eight in program operations, with thirty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-one in training and technical assistance. So I want to be clear that this is money that the federal government is giving the Head Start Program, saying that this is the amount of money we will give you. Now write a grant and tell us how you will spend it. So it is completely funded by the federal program. The Grant Forks Public School District, we don't receive money from the school district, although they are the grantee, they hold our money. And we get a lot of great benefits from being with the school district. But the money that is supporting the Head Start Program, the staffing, program operations, all of that is coming solely from the federal government. With receiving this money, the federal government says that you need to give us a non-federal share in the amount of seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, or I'm sorry, seven hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And so what that means is that is volunteer hours, or what we call in-kind, that we have to receive from our grantee, our families, our community partners. So we have to give that back to the federal government in volunteer hours. And so that is based on twenty percent of the money that they are saying, here you go. And I'll write a grant and tell us how you would spend that money. I have sent the, or reviewed this with policy council, who are made up of community members and families from Head Start, and they have approved it. They approved it on March twenty-first with a unanimous vote. And I have included the grant narrative and budget justification in your packet. I could go through that, but it's pretty long. So I have noted just the major changes, if that's okay. I will go through the major changes, but please stop me and ask questions as we go. When I write the five-year grant, I write, next year, I will do a, a large community assessment, a self-assessment, and we gather all that money, and then we come up with kind of a new plan on how we are going to proceed with goals and objectives for the next five years. So this is the last year, trying to reach the goals that we have set for our staff, our families and our students. We are funded for a hundred and eighty-seven students. We have had seventeen children in a classroom, and that has been too many three, four, five-year-olds in one classroom. So we wanted to open up a twelfth classroom this past school year to reduce class size to fifteen students. We were not able to find enough teaching staff for that classroom. We had, had a beautiful classroom at Ben Franklin. And because of the Office of Head Start sets the program performance standards that we also have to follow. So that is looking at student and staff ratio. So I need three teaching staff in, in a classroom. I was not able to find three teaching staff, so we were not able to open up that twelfth classroom. When you look at the cost per child of our students, if we are serving a hundred and eighty-seven children, it's fifteen thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars, what it costs us per child. But we are not just a school. We, the cornerstone of Head Start is to wrap the entire family around services. So I'm a little impartial, but our students get a wonderful education. But our families also are educated as well. We are working with our families. We're talking about the school readiness goals that we have for all of our children. We talk about how the parents are the first teachers, and so we're helping our parents with what they can do at home to help us increase those student outcomes when it comes to the school readiness goals. We have family services. So every school or two schools in the school district has a social worker. We have three that work with our families because not only do we have goals and outcomes for students, but also the Office of Head Start has us working so closely with families that we're also working with families on, on their goals. We have two nurses on staff because the Office of Head Start has a lot of requirements that we have to do with every child at Head Start. We have a mental health and disabilities coordinator. We have an enrollment person that, it's called Ursia. I talked a little bit about it last fall with you guys. But before we could even get children in the door, we need to make sure that they qualify for our program. And besides age, we look at income, and I will talk about that in a little bit when I get to our waitlist. So we have a lot of people and staff that we wrap around students and families. So that's why our cost per child is high. When I talked about this school year and how we weren't able to open up the twelfth classroom, we also had to close our eleventh classroom in October due to medical leave of a teacher. I had a designated teacher sub as her assistant teacher. So the goals that she was going to be subbing while the teacher went on leave, long-term leave, but I wasn't able to hire anybody to replace the designated sub. So unfortunately, that room had to close because we weren't, we didn't have enough staff. We moved those children to other classrooms. There were some families that did not want to move their children to other classrooms. So then our number from one seventy-two got reduced more. So we're currently serving a hundred and sixty-six children, and that is because of those two closed classrooms. When you look at cost per child, with what we're currently serving, it would be sixteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars per child. As we move into the fifth year, we are looking at, from what we have now, reducing the number of children we're serving by twelve students. So we would be looking at serving a hundred and fifty-four students next year, and that is just to meet a better ratio of student to adult. And if we look at the cost per child, when we're serving a hundred and fifty-four children, it's, it goes up more. It's eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. And why? Maybe you ask why we want to reduce numbers. Studies have shown that reducing the class size increases overall student achievement, especially for younger disadvantaged children who we serve. When you look at individualized instruction, we're going to get higher outcomes. There's more opportunities for children to form secure, attached relationships with teachers, which fosters that social, emotional development and promotes that positive psychological well-being for our students. We've received, or we've seen significant increase in the recent years in the number of each classroom who have experienced significant trauma in their lives. This is leaving our students unable to self-regulate. It is increasing the aggression to peers, to teachers. We've had more incident reports of peers getting hurt and, and teachers getting hurt because of aggressive children. Often, highly active, loud, stimulating classrooms can trigger those trauma-affected children to the point where they need to be removed from the classroom, or we are removing all the other students out of the classroom. Reducing the number of students also allows the staff more individual, or more time to meet those individual needs and accommodations that so many of our students need to be successful. It would increase the opportunities for the hand-on, hands-on individual instruction in a calm classroom. And overall, just build strong, healthy relationships. Also during, I talked a little bit about this too last time I was at the school board. We did receive a finding in our focus area two, which was the review that the federal government came in to do last October. And so in the area of non-compliance, they believed that there were too many staff, staff struggling with the challenging behaviors that we have with seventeen children in a classroom. And on that improvement plan that I brought just last month, one of the recommendations was to reduce class size. Currently, we have forty-two children on our waitlist. We have only four children that income qualify in the zero to one hundred percent income bracket. Two of those Two of those families, um, have declined because it's not at the particular school that, um, they want to be at. I should talk a little bit about that. Um, we do have, um, a few different sites in Grand Forks. The main site is connected to Lake Ega C Elementary School, and we have six classrooms, um, there. We have two classrooms at Century Elementary School, two classrooms at Lewis and Clark Elementary School, and then one classroom at Valley City Living where we do intergenerational programming. Um, so if there's a family that doesn't have a vehicle and they're walking to school, maybe they live right across from Century, um, we may not have an opening at Century, so they're going to go, a request to go back on the waitlist, um, until there's an opening, um, in one of those classrooms. We do have two children that follow in the one oh-one to one thirty percent poverty guideline, and then we have thirty-six children that are over income. Um, and because we are a program that caters to and serves children that follow within those poverty guidelines, um, we're not able to serve those thirty-six over income. So at this point, that gives us a waitlist of six students. That's been the lowest waitlist that, um, we've had in years. Um, so also when we reduce class size, there's not going to be a significant children, uh, amount of children that won't be served. Um, the other major change that we've had in the area of education and development, um, is for years we had all staff that, um, were there for twenty-plus years. We've had a lot of turnover lately with, um, staff retiring, and it's kind of been a revolving door this year. Um, we get people in, we, we spend the time, um, training them, and, um, they walk out the door for a less stressful job that, that pays more. Um, so we, we've worked, um, closely with the business office. Um, we have been able to acquire one international candidate who, um, is teaching for us. She's wonderful. Um, and again, we're working with the school district business office with recruitment, um, to try to get, um, staff in the door and stay in the door. The other change we've had is the services for children with disabilities. Uh, we've had more children than ever before, um, qualify for special education. Right now, we're at nineteen percent of our, um, population who are receiving individual education services, um, and we have more, um, assessments and IEP meetings coming up. Um, so that number's only going to increase. And we do have some returning kiddos that are on those IEPs. So in the fall, we have more students than we've ever had that will come on, um, already with, um, those IEP services. We, um, do have a sixty percent, um, early childhood special education teacher that, um, works with our children. Sixty percent of that is paid by the school district, because Head Start cannot pay for special education services. Um, but I am, um, asking for that position to be increased to one hundred percent with Head Start paying forty percent for, um, the MTSS. It's a multi-tier system of support interventionist, um, to help those students who have, um, legging skills, whether it be the academic or the social emotional liking skills. And those are the major changes that I have for next year, for the fifth year of the, the five-year grant, and, and the administrative recommendation is to approve that. Are there any questions?
Questions for Tracy or comments? Go ahead, Amber.
Is the early special child, special ed child at Classroom at Discovery not a part of underneath Head Start, that's special ed? Okay.
Correct.
Okay, and then is there any consideration? Of course staffing's always a part of the equation, but I know, um, families at Twining, um, or on the base have, um, always asked about, um, preschool options and things like that, but has that building been considered as an option?
It has. In fact, um, we used to have classrooms on the base. Um, what was happening though is when you look at the poverty guidelines that we have to follow, um, when you look at programs, whether it be WIC, um, or food stamps, we are one of the, um, the lowest bracket, income brackets, um, to qualify for services. Um, for an exam, for example, our families, when they're over a hundred and thirty percent of that poverty line, they're over income, but you still qualify for WIC when you're at a hundred and thirty percent. So when you look at our poverty guidelines, um, the parents at the base just don't qualify anymore.
Are there clarifying questions or comments? I want one quick one, just, and Tracy, Dr. Lewis, both you jump in. Um, how do you counsel, how do you counsel the families that, that don't qualify? That have, you know, they have needs, they have issues, uh, you know, are, are there alternative places in Grand Forks, or how do you, how do you, how do you counsel those ones that just can't quite get into the program?
Sure. Uh, we have resources that, we have a resource list that we give those families. Um, certainly, we won't leave them high and dry. Um, we will refer them to other agencies. Um, we'll still work with those families, um, on, on some level. Um, there's also Waterford Upstart that is an online tool. We refer families to that. Um, and then just the, the, um, programming that they have for early childhood in our community, which isn't a lot.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. I cut you off there, so, sorry.
No, thank you so much. I just wanted to, um, thank and appreciate our Head Start program. Um, Dr. Brenner and Tracy were both on my interview when I was interviewing for this position, and when Tracy came up and introduced herself on the Zoom, I got very, very excited, um, about the fact that this position was directly supporting Head Start. Um, and I just wanted to elevate that Tracy is responsible, as you heard, for four sites in our school district. She's responsible for a range of anywhere from a hundred and fifty-four students to a hundred and eighty-seven students. You heard her really talk about how she walks side by side and partners with our families and really has that wraparound service to our students and our families that are most vulnerable. The work that Tracy and her team are doing every day is literally changing the, the trajectory, and as you see, research studies and so forth, we hear about early intervention and the power of that. Head Start is early intervention. Um, these are students and families that typically wouldn't have access to high-quality preschool program anywhere in our community, and we are able to extend that to them. Um, one of the pieces that I wanted to talk about is Tracy, uh, earlier this year and her team literally worked with a student who had a pretty significant medical issue that had occurred outside the school building. Her and her team ensured that the right medical professionals were involved to, uh, assure that that student got care. They accompanied the student to the ER. The student was assessed at the ER. They stayed with the student the entire time. They comforted the family. They stayed during that medical assessment. They then stayed while the student was, um, gone, went through the intake and was admitted into the hospital, and a member of her staff or herself were at the hospital that entire time. That's the level of service that Tracy and her team provide on a very regular basis. As you've heard, not only tonight, but in presentations in the past, we have struggled with staffing at Head Start, yet Tracy is constantly championing. Brenda, um, sorry that I won't be able to go to joint admin. I'm subbing as a parent today. Do you need me to come over and help? Nope, we got this, we got this, we got this. I often sometimes take a directive approach with Tracy, and I tell her, stop working. You need to stop working. She will be messaging me on evenings, weekends, holidays, days off, and I tell her, please stop working. This is not only Tracy's job, but it's her lifeblood and her soul, and I'm very proud of the work that you do every day. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, so the recommendation is to approve the, uh, the, uh, fifth year of the continuation narrative, uh, grant narrative and budget justification along with the supporting documents. Do we have a motion in a second? A motion by Joel, do we have a second? Second by Bill. Uh, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Tracy. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
And shut your phone off. Go home. Uh, let's move on to item seven C, which is the general fund financial statement. We have our business manager back, uh, and it's on electronic pages two sixty-three to two seventy-two. Go ahead, Brandon.
Thank you, Dr. Lund, members of the board. It's the second meeting of the month, and my privilege to give you the update on the general fund statement. Um, this would be through July one, twenty-two through the February twenty-eighth, twenty-three. Um, the highest level for the first eight months, total general fund revenues were seventy-seven million, eight hundred and ten thousand, whereas expenditures were sixty-six million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand. That puts revenues over expenditures at, at just over eleven point three million dollars. Um, as always, the first report is a general fund statement that puts our actuals in comparison to the budget, and so you'll notice those headers, um, for the, for this year budget and actual in that order. Just a quick highlight, um, this time of year, we really start to see those local sources coming in from the property taxes. So those would have lagged up until this point, and, and February marks the first month and, and March the second where the majority of those come in. So you can see that we're showing sixty-five point five percent of our budgeted number for total revenues, uh, as, as federal and local will continue to come in, whereas the expenditures are stacking up fifty-six percent of the expenditures. Um, there, there gets to be a little contour towards the end of this, of the year as teachers, uh, and school lets out, there'll be a big salary payment right at the end. So it's, it's not a straight trajectory. It's not to anticipate that this will continue at that clip, um, but it's just to point that out. Um, one thing worth noting on this report and, and the next one here that compares to the prior year is within the salary bucket, so this is the, um, bottom of page two sixty-five of the packet. Um, we, we will put together professional staff, and there's paras and classified staff, and then there's subs. And so we're, we're tracking strongly on the amount of dollars that are spent on substitute teachers, um, and I, you know, double checking the accounting lines, those are paid, those are salaries, there's no other magic there. And so this is, um, as subs enter the classrooms with shortages, um, we're, we're seeing that here in the budget. That second report is mentioned, is kind of put that contour into context, so the first column is this year's actual, and then the second being, um, last year's actual, so you can kind of put this against each other. In the comment section, you'll notice I can't count. Um, those numbers go from one, three, four, five, six. They do correspond in the order, but I had skipped number two and should have relabeled that. So pointing out a number which should be two, substitute teacher is, is pointed out in this report, and then a couple of other, um, numbers that persist each month, um, including those Esri dollars coming to play and some of the, um, legal services that are being paid for to bring in our international talent. So then just kind of skipping down to the summary slides, um, page two seventy of the electronic packet is the general fund expenses, um, illustrated, and so you can see that compared to years previous, we're tracking under where we would have at this point. The next page, two seventy-one, general fund revenue, um, you can see that we are tracking on par, and, um, we'll see in March when the property taxes come on where that puts us in comparison to previous months. And then net-net, and again, this could be timing, um, still, on page two seventy-two, the general fund balance, we are stronger than we were the previous two years in this month of February. So with that being said, um, the administrative recommendations to approve the general fund financial statement for the period of July one through February twenty-eighth, and of course, I stand for any questions.
Any clarifying questions or comments for Brandon? Seeing none, can I get a motion in a second to approve the recommendation? Motion by Jeff, do we have a second? Second by Dave. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Let's move on to item seven E, which is a consent, consent agenda that was modified at, uh, earlier tonight, uh, electronic pages two seventy-three through two eighty-six, and then the one resignation we have at the table. Can I get a motion in a second for the consent agenda? Moved by Bill. Second by Josh. Assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to seven E, which is a waiver of years of experience and appointment of Amy Fiala on electronic page two eighty-seven. Dr. Brenner.
Thank you, Dr. Lund. I think I'll just go right down to the bottom, um, other than pointing out that she will be a medical careers teacher at Grand Forks Central High School, hard-to-fill position. Um, it's the administrative recommendation to allow sixteen years of experience to be brought into the district by Amy Fiala and to, uh, and to approve her teaching appointment. Uh, she'd be placed at sixty-two thousand, nine eighty-four, MAMS, step seventeen, which will likely change after negotiations. Thank you.
Can we get a motion in a second for that waiver? Moved by Bill, second.
Second.
Second by, by Joel. Any clarifying questions or comments about the motion? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Okay, what we've been waiting for, let's move on to policy review, uh, uh, electronic pages two eighty-eight through three hundred. Dr. Shab.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to complete the second reading of the following policies, uh, and to approve these as amended or, and adopt them. H E A C, Management of Student Activities Fund. H E A D, Fixed Assets, Assets Management. H E A F, Fund Balance Policy. H E B A, System of Accounts. I C C B, Disposal of School Equipment and Supplies, and H D B, Revenues from School-Owned Properties.
So we have a motion to approve those on a second reading? Do we have a second to that motion? Second by Jeff. Any questions or comments about any of those six, uh, policies? Seeing none? We have a motion on the floor, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Back to you, Dr. Shab.
Thank you. I make a motion to rescind the following policies. Thirty-three fifty-one, Management of Student Funds. Thirty-three forty, School Facility Inventory. And thirty-four twenty, Sale and Disposal of Books, presuming the adoption of, well, we just did, of I C C B.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any clarifying questions about the rescindments? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to seven G, which is the resignation of, uh, Dr. Vandel, uh, Dr. Brenner.
Yes, this just hit our mailbox today. Uh, it's, uh, it's a bit of a, a sad day, but also a celebration for, uh, Dr. Vandel. He'll be resigning, uh, his position if board approves, uh, at the end of his contract year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, Dr. Vandel has been offered the superintendent position in Newtown, North Dakota. So congratulations to Dr. Vandel.
Can we get a motion in a second? Moved by Bill, second by, by Josh. Any clarifying questions? Seeing none, assuming a roll call vote, all those in favor, please state aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Let's move on to item eight, uh, eight A is announcements. I've got two. Um, our next board meeting is not on Monday, April tenth, because there's no school that day. It's Tuesday, April eleventh, so just remember that. And then I know Cindy has it in my calendars, but I don't know if that's Google Docs or what that is, but if you don't have it in your calendar, make sure you've got the School Board Leadership Institute Retreat for June eighth and June ninth, the Thursday and Friday in your calendars, so your busy work schedules are all blocked. So those are the two announcements I had. Dr. Brenner.
I have two celebrations. Uh, one, I think you all received the, um, School Board Journal Magazine in your probably home, uh, mailbox, but if you didn't, uh, didn't notice on page twenty-seven, the Mentor Center is being celebrated at the National School Board Association, um, conference, and, um, uh, Rob and David will be there as the coordinator, along with one of her colleagues, to accept the award, the award on behalf of the Mentor Center, so thank you for your continued support. And the final one is, I, I can't specifically talk about Maggie Barker's, uh, academic achievement, because that would be violating FERPA. Uh, but she's also a member of the Red River Girls Basketball, uh, State Championship Team, and, uh, not only did they win the state basketball championship, but the team- And not only did they win the state basketball championship, but the team collectively has a four-point zero grade point average. So congratulations to Maggie and her teammates.
Dr. Lewis, you have any announcements? GFA have any announcements for us? I see somebody waving their hand over here. Dave, go ahead.
Thank you, I'll be brief. You may have seen this through various correspondence, but a week from Thursday, April sixth, on behalf of Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, the Public Schools and Grand Forks Youth Commission, Alter Health System, Grand Forks Public Health, all together hosting a public event at six P M, Central High School Auditorium, Thursday, April sixth, at six P M. The presentation will be virtual by Dr. Jason Burrow Sanchez on Understanding Adolescent Substance Use from the Perspective of Brain and Behavior. So just wanted to speak that publicly. If you want some more information, just get in touch with me or Bill Vasicek. We co-chair that commission.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Seeing none, board requests for future consideration. What requests do we have for future? You're looking like you might. Nope. Okay. Let's move on to item eight C, which is School Board Norms. Joel, how did we do?
I think we, as a team, did well. I appreciate Amber's advocacy on behalf of our students and our community, and for that, we get an A plus.
Thank you. Sorry, we ran a little over, but we had some heavy, heavy subjects to talk about tonight. Thank you, have a good evening and all.